Good evening, it's 7:00 P.M. I'll call the meeting to order if you please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So tonight we have our annual student achievement report given by Mr. Burt. I just want to remind the board, please hold your comments and questions until Mr. Burt stops periodically for them and then please wait to be recognized when we run along.
We all set?
We are, thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you, thank you. So as a reminder, this is an annual report that we give out on our student achievement from the previous school year. I'm just going to get right into it. Just thought, as Mrs. Lemon said, that periodically through the night, if you have questions, I'll stop for questions. Also, we have a number of administrators here this evening to help us answer some questions at night. Okay? So just to remind everybody of our district goals, one, two, and three, and to remind the board as well as everyone in the audience that we are working towards our targets for these goals. We had a great workshop last week and we'll continue to develop those targets. You will see some overlap between the targets and some of the data discussed this evening. So what measurements do we have that we're going to be taking a look at tonight? First of all, we have the Smarter Balance, both in terms of the achievement or percent of students at goal as well as the growth scores, students how well they're growing year over year. We have the PSAT. This year, we're reporting on 10th and 11th grade. Next year, we'll report out on 9th grade when we have two years of data for them. And we have the SAT, which, reminder, this is the School Day SAT, which is held during the week and this is for all juniors across the state. Not included in this data are the other SAT dates where some of our students might be taking it as part of their process for going to college, improving their scores, et cetera. There are other test dates in the fall and summer, but we are specifically including the one where the majority of juniors across the state take that SAT and take that. Okay? What is not present, what we don't have, if you remember from the board agenda, we are now including the CMT and CAP science and we're doing this following the lead from the state. The state has not released those scores and it does not seem as if they will be. And if you recall from the agenda item, it's primarily because the state assessments on CMT and CAP no longer align to our standards. The state adopted two years ago the next generation science standards, NGSS, and they're developing new assessments to align to those. I believe this spring we'll be aligning to the new pilot of the NGSS for 11th grade. That's still to be determined and the rumor is, is that the CAP, I'm sorry, the CMT for 5th and 8th grade may also be replaced by a pilot, but that's for now, we're still scheduled with the CMT for 5th and 8th grade. The bottom line for us, we're not reporting on science scores at this time. We will report out once we get a valid and reliable assessment for the new standards. Any questions on those? Yes?
If we're not getting reports back from the state, why even have kids take the test? Do we have to have the kids take the test?
For the SISA, there's state laws as part of their waiver that they said we would give a science test, so, but that's a good question for the state. You know, it's one of those elements to their waiver that they are looking to change. Good question. So quick definitions, just to remind everybody of what we're talking about this evening. At goal, that is typically set, a benchmark set, in this case, the, for the SBA, that is at level three or four above, it's a four-point scale for that. PSAT and SAT, the College Board and the state set standards for each grade level. Well, for the College Board sets it for PSAT, the state has set a cut mark for the SAT and essentially we talk about at goal, that is the percentage of students that have reached those cut marks. Another way of saying this, and you'll see this in the slide, is something we could refer to as achievement. Benchmark is the same thing, it's essentially a grade level standard, same thing as at goal. Growth score, this is percentage of students making gains appropriately, typically over year. Year-over-year data, as you recall from last week, this is different students in the same grade level, different students. In other words, 3rd grade last year and 3rd grade this year, same grade level, completely different set of students. Cohort, we try to track those who are the same students moving from grade to grade. If you recall, we use what's called a rough cohort model. We don't exactly match students and if there's some students move out and move in, then we just take that as part of the process. So going with the feedback from the board and to trying to get a sense, how are we doing? This presentation's going to include a couple of different things and hopefully try to do interpretation of the data to give you a sense of exactly how are we doing. One note, please remember that we give district level data, we are not doing school-by-school data and that has just been the format of this presentation in the past. So there's three ways in which you can measure how you're doing. One is against a standard. In other words, the state sets a scale score on the SBA and there's the cut score, how well are we doing against those standards? Same thing for the SAT, how well are our students doing against the benchmark set for those individual students? Another way is to compare yourself to others. How is Milford doing compared to like districts? We use four districts in comparison and I'll show you that data in a moment. The final way is to compare against yourself, set goals for yourself. And we're going to be exploring a lot of that data as well, how are our students doing compared to previous years? So we're going to explore all three of these means this evening. We're going to start with math. We're going to start with Smarter Balance. First thing we're going to start out with is one of those things I talked about, is comparison to other districts. Now, I'm also going to try to display the data a little bit differently in this presentation. We're going to have some bar graphs, I know that makes your eyes water, but we're just hold with me for a minute, we're going to start with the bar graphs. But this is comparison districts, four comparison districts, this is the spring, Smarter Balance, math, and again, this is percentage at goal. First two slides, this is first two graphs, this is 3rd grade and 4th grade. As you can see, Milford is in the green, the state is the next, and then we have New Milford, Shelton, Southington, and Wallingford. And I've added a cut line for you to get a sense of how well we're doing compared to other districts. This is 3rd grade. And 4th grade, approximately right about in the middle compared to those four other districts. 5th grade, right around the same, a little bit above. 6th grade, above the four comparative districts. 7th grade, right around. 8th grade, about in the middle. Now, that's one way of looking at it. I did want to provide you with a different way of looking at it. And what I'd like to do is give you a comparison to the previous year because those were four districts that you looked at just for this year, but how did everybody do compared to the previous year? So what I've done essentially is smushed grades 3 through 8 together for all four districts and the state and for us, just to get a sense. Is this scientific? No. Could we do this grade level by grade level? Yes. But this is just to get a general perspective of how well are other districts and the state doing compared to us if we take all achievement grades 3 through 8, percentage of students at goal. And to start with, we're going to start with the benchmark of 2016. The arrows that you'll see next are an indication of change. So if you were a 10 in 2016 and you were a 15, you should see a plus arrow of five, opposite if you went down. So 2016 benchmark, the four comparison Dirgs, their overall achievement grades 3 through 8 went down .5. Again, that's combining all grades together. The state went up 1.5, that's all students grade 3 through 8, essentially every student that took the SBA. And Milford averaged went up 4.5 between all the grades. So that's the change in difference between 2016 to 2017. Just one more way of looking at the total data. At this point, we're going to take a look at Smarter Balance, we're going to look at percentage at goal. This is year-over-year data, different students, same grade, different students. And this is all by grade. And trying to avoid the bar graphs, some people call them lollipops, other people call them balloons, just to give you a sense of how each grade is doing. Again, this is year-over-year data, this is not same students. So you can see this is grade 3, 2015, 53 percent, 59 and 63 percent in the most recent year. In 20, I'm sorry, 4th grade, again, a general progression upwards, different students, year-over-year data. Grade 5, now I want you to remember this slide or mark it on your packet, we're going to refer back to this. Grade 5, it's an area that we've had concerns, but I also want you to notice the trend, again, it's still moving upwards. So that's elementary, grades 3, 4, and 5, a general trend upwards. Grade 6, over three years of data, 48, 49, up to 58 percent. Grade 7, starting low, moving up over the three years, again, middle school students, different students. And then grade 8, this is another area of concern for us and I will come back to this, but again, in general, seeing an area of movement in the right direction. So to give you a sense, I wanted to give you a summary overall because you just looked at a series of slides and it's difficult to interpret that and memorize it. So I wanted to give you a similar graph to the one we did with the Dirg, just oriented it a little bit differently horizontally and vertically. Again, starting in 2016 compared to 2017, how did that same grade, different students do compared to the year before? So in 3rd grade, from 16 to 17, different students, there was a 4 percent increase. 4th grade, 1 percent. 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th grade. So to give you a general, again, the question was, how are we doing? So as a whole, in general, rates 3 through 8, year-over-year, we're seeing a general shift in the right direction, averaging out somewhere around 4.5 percent, in essence as the previous slide. Any questions at this point? Yes?
I have a question. On the lollipops that you showed earlier, what do the colors mean?
So what I tried to do is do a little bit of color coding. Thank you for noticing. In general, in general, if it was below 50 percent or visible way below 50 percent, the darker the red, moving above 50 percent, starting to be green. Is it scientific? No, but just to give you some visual reference, if things are below or above or moving in the right direction, there's a little line between them as well to give you a general understanding, are things moving up or is there not much progress? Green means things are moving up, yellow sideways, red, reddish is going down.
Okay. Thank you.
Not scientific terminologies, but just to try to...
No, I didn't know if it was versus...
Avoid the bar graphs to make your eyes bleed.
That's okay. I didn't know if it was versus state benchmarks, but it was just 50 percent, below 50 was red.
Red is, you know, ideally, we'd be in the 80th percentile, which we're talking about, which you'll see at the end, we get to the summary in terms of students at standard, but just to show growth, give you a little bit of color coding.
Okay.
Other questions? This is a growth model now. As you recall, last week, we had a lengthy discussion about the growth model, which was a new standard that came out from the state back in January. They did release the scores for this August, so we do have an understanding of how did growth do for the district. We did not provide individual grade levels, we can provide that, but I wanted to give you a general sense of how the district was doing as a whole. And if you recall on the growth model, this is matched cohorts. In other words, if you were a student in Milford in 4th grade and you're a student in 5th grade, you counted. If you weren't in Milford in 4th grade, you do not count towards this score. So this is Milford student and Milford student. And there's two indicators on the growth model. The first one is, what is the percentage of students that met their individual growth target? So I have 60 points, did I make it? If Mr. Cavanna has 40 points, did he make his? And we just do a percentage, strictly yes or no. So that's the first measurement. The second measurement, as you recall from last week, is the overall percentage of my growth target. So mine was 60. If I only got 50 points, I'm going to do math here, 80-ish percent. So I reached 80 percent. And so what we do is we take all students and average out how much did they grow. As you recall, one of our proposed targets is, we want to have all of our students at 100 percent of their growth target by 2026. And the state looks to have 100 percent of their growth targets by 2030. So that is one of our proposed targets and we'll be concluding that conversation in October. So in general, you'd want to see more students, or, I'm sorry, the average to go up. So hopefully it makes sense, you recall our conversation from last year. So the first statistic is the percentage of students that met target. Now, is this where we want it to be? No, 46 and 48 percent, is it moving in the right direction? Yes. So that's of all 4th grade through 8th grade students, as you recall, 3rd grade's not accounted for this because you need to have a year's worth of data. 3rd grade is the first time we give that assessment. The second indicator again is the percent of target achieved. Overall, we want to move students towards 100 percent. Are we making progress towards that goal? Yes, in mathematics. So we take all 4th through 8th grade students and we average out their percent of their target achieved, it comes out to 70 percent for this year. I can pause here for questions.
Sorry.
Yes?
So that's the percent that met their growth target?
Which, which side is that?
I'm sorry, on the left?
Yes. So this, that's a yes/no. Either you make it or you don't. Did you make the points or not? Even if I had 59 out of 60 points, I got so close, doesn't count towards that indicator.
Okay, so let me ask again, so that's the grade level target?
So we're going to review this at the next board workshop on targets. Each individual student gets their own target based on where they're starting. So if I'm lower on the scale, my target's higher. If I'm way up here, my target is much smaller. And the range is somewhere between 88 points, I think is the low end, down to about 15 or 20 points at the top end. So you still have to grow if you're at the very, very tip of the top, but you're, there's a little less room for growth there, as opposed to, we want to move you further at the bottom.
Okay.
So it's more difficult for me if my goal is 88 points than it is for me at 20. That's why the second measurement is what the state is using as a more valid measurement of overall growth, because what I can say is, I didn't hit 88 points, but I got 70 points. Wow, that's huge growth, so you should get credit for that, you know? And then even at the top, if you got 15 out of 20 points, you're at 75 percent, that's still good growth. But did you, it's a little less harsh than the yes/no of the left-hand measurement.
Okay, I got it.
Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so I understood that question, but I'm still having trouble with the green side. So if I met 50 percent, I had to go 40 points and I only got 20, so that's 50 percent, but how, is it the number of, if you add up all the percentages, how do you come up with that?
This isn't a fair analogy, but I'm going to give it a shot.
Okay.
Teaching a US history class, there's 25 students in my class, the class average is 75. Did everybody get a 75 on that test?
No.
What was their benchmark though? What was their score they were shooting for?
100, I think.
100. Okay, so everyone had the same score. And so some people got below 75, some people got 100 perhaps, and it averages out to 75. The only difference with that is that for you, it might be 100, for Jim, it might be 50, you know, for me, it might be 20.
Okay, so it's the...
But then we average it, then we average...
The average who made or the average growth made.
Correct.
Sort of? Okay.
I'm going to say yes. So again, how are we doing? We want to grow students. We want more students to hit their targets and we want to be closer to 100 percent on this. How does that compare to the state? I threw in a couple of arrows. The first measurement, the met-target, the one on the left, went from 42 to 40, I'm sorry, 44 to 42 percent of students meeting their target, so that's the state average, all students 4th grade in the state. And then on the right-hand side, the average percent of target achieved, 65 to 62. So in general, the state went down in both indicators. That's all districts, all students in the state. So we're going this way, the state went that way. It's one of the things we want to look at from the state because, you know, are there indicators, you know, if we went down, it might be that there was a shift in the tests or that there's a general shift, adjustment over time as students take the test for a third time. So another way to look at scores, instead of year-over-year, of course, is to look at these rough cohorts. How are students doing if they, in general, we guess about 95 percent of the students remain the same from year-over-year, grade to grade? How did they do from a certain starting point in the next grade and then the next grade? So same students, over three years of data. So this first slide is grades 3 to 5, starting in 2015, ending this grade. So grade 3, 53, then grade 4, same students, 59, and then a drop, which is an area of concern. 5th grade again, which I pointed out before, I'll come back to that. Grades 4 through 6 now, starting in 4th grade three years ago, 48, I'm sorry, 49, 48, 57, again, a drop in 5th grade. So this is, when we talk about how are we doing and do we look at the data, this is an area that we're taking a look at. And then 5th to 7th, starting low, 41, 49, 55, good growth, good remediation. Is 55 percent where we want to be is achievement level for a cohort? No, but we're moving in the right direction. Okay? I want to refer back to that slide I told you to put a checkmark to. 5th grade is an area of concern, but we are seeing growth year-over-year. So it is, we are paying attention to it, principals are paying attention to it, teachers are paying attention to it, and we're trying to do remediation. It is an area of concern that we will continue to look at over time. That in addition to 8th grade, 48, 51, 48, is another area of concern for us. This is an important year, obviously, moving off into high school. We want to make sure that we have more students at achievement level, at grade level, as they progress into high school. That's something important we want to watch. So in general, if you flip through those slides, you're seeing trends in the right direction and some trends that are flat when it comes to cohort. That's again, something we want to build on. If we see progress over two years, the third year, we want to build on that progress. We wouldn't want to see up and down over three years. And I could pause here for questions.
Ms. Krasinski?
So these last group of slides that you showed us, this is like a cut line achievement, not growth.
This is still at the percentage of students at benchmark.
Okay, so there's a...
Grade level. Are they a grade level?
A cut line, they have to approach the score.
Correct. Correct.
Federico?
Oh, thank you. When you said you're looking at 5th grade and you said something about remediation, so what does that look like? Is it, is it alignment of curriculum or teaching practices? Like what kind of things are you doing?
Well, in general, when we take a look at this, we're going to look at different schools, different teachers and different students and take, and see what had happened over time. Is there trends? Are there pockets? Is it the grade as a whole? If it's the grade as a whole, then we look at curriculum, because that indicates that, wait a second, we're not gaining ground. If one school gains ground and the other doesn't, then we got to look deeper into our instruction, as well as, you're going to hear about something about SRBI process, which is basically our intervention process. Are we appropriately looking at student-level data? Are we then targeting instruction to those students and are we monitoring it and making up for any deficits they may have? That's what you're not going to see in this presentation, the student-level data where we go down, the principals go down, Swanson goes in, and they start talking about different students. I actually just went into a data level meeting this morning and they talked about two students over 20 minutes. And just started to talk about, what do we know, it's the fourth week of school, what do we know about the student last year, what do we know about the student this year, and what are the plans? And there was a team that sat around and talked about what are the plans to work in the next six weeks, specific interventions, and then monitor what those interventions doing from back in six weeks. And then we'll talk about the student, how things are going, what the next level of intervention we can do after that. So it's, it's, there's multiple forms of attack, if you will, for this. One is taking a look at overall instruction. Are we really doing what best we can for all students and core area instruction? Is our curriculum aligned? Is our instruction aligned to our curriculum? Is the instruction aligned to assessments? Are the teacher-generated assessments aligned to what the expectations are? There's a lot of facets that go into that. But then, if those are all working well, then we dive down into, you know, perhaps, not defaulting teachers, but someone who came into that grade level new that's not familiar with 5th grade, for example, that's, do we have coaches working with them, are the principals working with them, are there colleagues working with them to ensure that they're up to speed on that particular grade level? So there's multiple ways we...
So for 5th grade math specifically, did you find anything so far or you're just looking at all those things?
I'm going to...
Are you getting that? I'm sorry.
I'm going to tag you over the misword.
Oh, okay.
Hi, I'm going to just stand for a second. So to all of those, I would say yes. So one of our big pushes right now in our, in really K-FAD, so when we look at 5th grade, I look at that as kind of an endpoint, really. If our students are falling down there, okay, that might be telling us something that's actually maybe a little backwards about, so they're supposed to really have a really solid foothold on the beginning of understanding of fractions, which means we're done teaching really whole number computation for the most part. We spend a little bit of time there. So if they're not, if we know fractions is really a focus of 5th grade, which is what we do know, so then why is it that maybe we're not, we're not achieving like we, like we would hope to? So then we look at, okay, so where's the foundation of fractions begin? It begins back in 3rd grade. So we take this as an indicator of looking into 5th grade deeply, but also then looking backwards a little bit to say, well, is, how much time are we spending there in 3rd grade? Where does that unit stand? How much, you know, literally how much time in the calendar? We have a pacing guide for every course, so how much time are we spending on that? And then the other question is, how much time are we spending in whole number computation in 5th grade? And what we realized, when we really looked at our pacing, there's a lot, there's a little too much time there. There's not enough time. If fractions is the focus of 5th grade, then you would imagine we spend the majority of our year there. And then when we took a peel back, we went, oh my, look at this, look at how our units are landing. So, and then looking at our resource, is it, is it giving us enough work in fractions and do our teachers understand how to teach conceptual fraction understanding? Not just things like drop, change, flip, or multiplication, multiplication, but why does all that happen?
So to give you breathe, it's okay. So to give you my understanding as a history teacher from high school, interpretation of that. Really what it is, so if these standards and expectations are in 5th grade, are, is there a base for that 3rd and 4th grade? Or if we make a shift in 5th grade, because math is so sequential in skills, you have to make that shift down grades. So we're, in essence, still fine-tuning our grades and our alignment and fine-tuning our understanding of the Smarter Balance and fine-tuning our common core to ensure that we're addressing the needs. Then, when we translate up into middle school, they're getting a good kickoff in the middle school, there's no deficiencies into 6th grade. But we do have some principals, elementary principals here, if you want to chime in on any efforts with 5th grade. Ms. Turner?
Hi, good evening. Thank you. So, you know, I think one of the biggest things is really the SRBI process and I think it's really looking at the whole picture of data. So we're talking about SBA data and not to take away from that, but in really helping the teachers to refine what data source are they going to be looking at to get that in-depth look at ed kids. What I find that we're looking at a lot within our professional development is sometimes we don't go beyond so many layers of skin in looking at the data. Teachers will on their own, but it's really that concerted team effort of when we're at an SAT team where you have a math coach, where you have other leadership there that can really ask some pointed questions about, have you considered using this? What's the amount of time that you're looking at this skill set? What I find a lot that we've done with our 4th grade team last year that was very successful was using a lot of the times that we had built in, such as some of our Wednesday meetings, our PLCs, and really tying our coaches in there to help teachers look at the data and make sense as to what strategy is going to give you the biggest bang for your buck when you're looking at small group instruction with math. So I think that's really where my laser light focus is going to be this year in terms of, especially with the 5th grade, but with the grade level, to say, we have all this data. We have NWEA, we have SBA, what kind of connections are we starting to see? And that's really what we need to look at first. So we're not looking at things in separate pockets and trying to fix a number of different things, because if you go to a doctor's appointment and get your physical, if you isolate any one area, you're going to say, oh, I want to work there, right? But if you look at it globally, you start to see, what are those things that I'm noticing and where does this come up? And I can tell you that the teachers that have already started doing this work in some of these Wednesday meetings, hitting the ground running from the beginning of the year, they're already starting to see pockets that they want to talk to our math coach, to bring up to myself and to Ms. Swanson and say, is this something we're seeing in other places or is this something here that we're seeing, we want to work on with our kids? So for me, our SRBI processes, those intervention processes, but also, you know, really giving that time is what's moving it, because they are happy to work with kids, but I think unless you're really working on this skill set that's going to move them, you're working fast, 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 but you're not going to get the outcome that you want. So for me, it's refinement. It's really looking at that, multiple data points and saying, this is what it's going to do for us. So we've started to identify some children already that can use support and teachers are already putting that into place and we're five weeks into school. So to me, I'm happy that we're going there, I want to see that continue.
Yes.
Which school are you from?
I'm from Matthews, in LA.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Krasinski?
So, and just one more thing while we're at, you know, 8th grade is concerned, so I won't call them, Ms. Carlson, she's only been there... so, um, I won't call her Ms. Carlson, she's only been there for four weeks. So, we do have our two other middle school principals that should speak too. If you could, either one of you speak to the whole grade level data analysis rather than getting down, as, as Ms. Curry was talking about getting down to that student level. What's the starting point to look at year over year data, cohort data, the growth data? Where, where do you want, how do we start at the building level, grade level?
Sure. So, what we're doing, um, you know, Steve, Shane, and myself with our assistant principals in our curriculum, there's a math, there are math teachers, we're almost doing like a curricular instructional audit. We, you know, making sure that the, um, the curriculum and the instruction are aligned to the standards and what's being asked in the assessment. And making sure that, that the pacing is done in the time where the kids are making sure they're, um, aware of the material prior to the assessment. And also making sure they're able to make connections between what's being asked in class to what's being asked in, on the assessment itself. So it's really looking at the curriculum, finding the connections to the standards which are aligned to smarter balance. Making sure on that smarter balance assessment that the kids are familiar with how to utilize the, um, the technology to answer the questions appropriately. Also to make sure that the curriculum is hitting the, um, the areas before the assessment is given. And if we need to look back and say, well, listen, we're struggling in this specific area, do we need to relook at how we're, um, giving, doing this instruction in the classroom to look at where it is pacing? Do we have to look at, are we spending enough time to give the kids this support? And so kind of what Melissa said, if you have specific kids that, you know, listen, it's not a curricular issue, it's not an instructional issue, isn't it an intervention issue? Is it where these certain kids need specific interventions to help them, you know, meet their colleagues at the end grade?
If, if I may, this is the cut score analysis, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, one of the things that would help me, and maybe you could just do it verbally, but, a scatter diagram of students in that same condition of saying, okay, forty-eight percent made the cut, where are the other fifty-two percent? Are they scattered really, really close to that line, or they're all scattered way below it? And here, there, you know? So I'm thinking, it would help from an assessment of the district to kind of see the cluster of students and how they are in terms of meeting that, that cut score.
It varies by grade, but I would say we have, um, a majority of our students, there's four levels in SBA, majority of our students are two and three, as you would assume a bell curve situation.
We would help.
One of the things that we do analyze is, are we shifting kids from level to level, but that is a part of the growth model as well? Are we moving students, you know, appropriately? And just, just so you know, when, when Mr. Cabana was speaking, it's not just cut scores, it is bringing growth data, it's bringing in our local assessments, we do have NWA, which, you know, you do a crosswalk, I was just over at Harborside with some math teachers, and they were doing a crosswalk between NWA and smarter balance. What can you see, what don't you see? Because they're different assessments, gives you a different picture on the same group of students, which is also appropriate. We have to mention, of course, these are snapshots in time. Now, this is a very short window for each school where these students are assessed. Um, so this is the, a health check, you know, as Ms. Curry said, you go in for your yearly checkup, you know, with your doctor. And it's sort of a whole diagnostic of your whole system, you know, the, the temperature, the et cetera, heart rate, oxygen. And then if there's some specific diagnosis, wait a second, you know, I'm hearing something funny with your heart, well, then you might go for an echocardiogram because you want further diagnostic. Same thing with math or language arts. We do a whole system checkup, you know, a couple of times a year with NWA, we do once with smarter balance, SAT is once, PSAT is once. But that's just a quick check. And then we have to dive deeper into a more diagnostic assessment to give us more details into specific skills. Based on that, we can dive even deeper through other assessments to give us some specifics, essentially, uh, I'm sorry, especially at the elementary level, we have more assessments that we can do a deeper dive than we do at the secondary level. But as I said in our target discussion, we are trying to develop those assessments at the secondary level to give us a better vision, specifically of our third goal, as you recall, it's a broader goal that doesn't necessarily align to the SAT.
Mrs. Krzyszczewski?
So, I can see at fifth grade, you're looking back to see what might be missed and how you can, same thing with eighth grade. But what happens to those kids that were in fifth grade last year and now are in sixth grade, or were in eighth grade last year and now are in ninth grade? Are you looking at the curriculum to see what you missed? And are you going to do something with the sixth grade curriculum for those fifth graders to make up for what they missed in fifth grade? Or at high school, when they're, you know, scattered out there, how do you, how do you make up for, how do you identify those students and, and give them what they may have missed because we didn't have it or that wasn't?
I would reference this cohort chart, you know, again, it's forty-one percent of students coming out of fifth grade 2015. You can see the work that was done in sixth and seventh grade to make sure they were addressing the needs of the students. Ideally, you're not starting at such a deficit, you're not starting at forty-one, you're starting at fifty-five and working up from there, or starting at seventy and working up from there. But, you know, you can see that this is hard work to pick, you know, essentially sixty percent of the student body, which you cannot do through some of the interventions we're talking about. The interventions are intensive, they're specific, they're individual, you know, I can't take seventy students and do that with. It just isn't possible. So we have to look at core instruction. How are our teachers addressing the needs on a daily basis in their classroom when they're in front of these students for fifty to sixty minutes? That's where we have to go to first. Try to make up for any lost areas, do those quick assessments. One of the things I'm going to mention in a moment, we, um, from the state now, we have what are called interim assessments from the smarter balance, and these are very quick. We can do fifteen minute, ten minute, very quick, it says small and on a specific skill. So the teachers can go in, same system as smarter balance, but instead of a two-hour assessment, you can pick five questions that are targeted to a very specific math skill. So what we can do is call a pre-assessment. We're going to do this unit on fractions, I'm going to do a quick assessment of where my students are. Hey, if the whole class is doing great on fractions, I'm not going to spend three weeks on that because they've already mastered it and move on to the next. Or, wow, half the students have a serious deficit, half the students don't, so how am I going to customize my instruction to ensure I'm not leaving these folks behind? Or, I'm paying so much attention to them that these folks aren't getting instruction. So there's a lot of, a lot of moving parts to this process, but we're starting to, we pilot the, what are called IABs, another acronym, interim, interim assessment?
Blocks.
Blocks, thank you. And in a few of our schools, and it's beginning to be piloted in all of our K eight schools, so. That answer your question? I lost sight of the question, sorry.
Did, did it answer a question, Elset? Or not?
I think I have to refine my question, because I have to think about it for a little bit.
We have time, so. So we've, we've discussed some of these things, what are our next steps K three? So, um, we've recently rolled out investigations, and again, if Ms. Swanson can help me with this if you have any questions. But, um, you know, in, Ms. Swanson, investigations are rolled out to what grade recently?
So, we enrolled out investigations in our K five world, and then it's, um, companion curriculum is called Connected Math. And that has really, really, last year in eighth grade, that was our first year implementation of that curriculum. So for example, I, I think I might be able to add a little bit of information, my eighth grade teachers, knowing that, they're really supposed to come out of seventh grade with some really strong equation solving, so I was meeting with an eighth grade teacher who said basically, you know what, Lisa, this wasn't strong last year, and I'm noticing it's weak again this year, I'm going to actually take a couple of days right now and I'm going to just do some pre-teaching to make sure that they're up to snuff. So when you, when we know an area is weak, our teachers are making those little finessing moves based on their students to kind of say, well, you know what? So I walked in and she kind of goes like, oh, I'm not teaching my eighth grade content right now, but then she's talking to me and going, but this is, I know this is weak. And I'm going, that's the right thing to do. You have to, you can't just move on and teach things that require two and three equations when we know they can't somewhat. So, the, the teachers, I think, are making those moves and they're meeting in grade level teams by school really, because some of those things are unique to that school and not unique across the district. Is that, I, I think maybe answers to the, how do we start to kind of fill in some of those weak areas? But, um, so last year, that curriculum was new to eighth grade students and the teachers, as opposed to our sixth and seventh grade students who have, who have been coming up in a very specific progression from five to six. We went from investigations to connected math. But last year, we implemented connected math in two grades simultaneously, which meant that the seventh graders were familiar with that concept-based instruction, but the eighth graders were not. So there was a lot of work last year to try to help those students really succeed in a very different instructional approach. This year, the good news is, is the teachers and the students are all very used to that approach.
So it's an all three middle school grades now?
Yes, yes, we finished, we finished that implementation.
Could that be some of the reason why the, the drop? Because it was a curriculum that we weren't familiar with and-
Yes, correct.
You changed, kind of changed whatever.
Yes, absolutely, correct. The students for both, that was a, a really what I would call double whammy. So it was new to the students and to the teachers, whereas this year, all both students, so in seventh grade last year, you had it new to teachers, but not new to students. Was that? Whereas in eighth grade, they had both.
Look at the high school level, that's why those support centers are so important, because there's additional staff taking math and English, but kids may need those for that additional intervention that, you know, beyond classroom instruction.
Do they get, I'm sorry, do they get sent by the teacher or do they have to go on their own?
Kick it to my high school support center.
The, the primary focus for, for what we're doing with that at the high school level is the direct instruction. How are we looking at the data and trying to recognize where the deficiencies are for the students in our, in the group that we're in the class who we're teaching? And how are we going to direct our instruction to try to help learners who have a different needs? Well, we are very fortunate at the high schools, they have a support center where kids can either be referred for a finite period of time, so they're not understanding a concept, or they self-refer, which is the majority of the case. So if I'm having a problem with this geometry concept, I can go down there under my study bar, once, twice, three times in a, in a cycle and get the help I need. And because it's a math teacher collaborating with their colleague to find out where that deficiency is, they're able to really tailor it more specifically and then it gets ready for. So that's a double whammy for us at the high school, but the primary focus I don't really, and I'm sure we'll be getting to-
Getting there, yeah.
What's that direct instruction going into classroom? That's where the conversations are, that's where we're looking at the data to say, how can we differentiate and provide the important instruction where there's gaps based on the, like for ninth graders, based on all that data that comes from the middle, middle school? That data follows them, so it's not like, okay, their ninth grade is star old. And, and that's, that's why the curriculum is going to be so much, because it really is a more coherent, progressive, you know, K through twelve.
Are the ninth grader, the old eighth graders, are, did you notice the teachers are noticing they're still having the same problem, like they still haven't got to that point yet? Have they noticed any change?
So, I mean, we are going to speak about this in a moment when we get through the PSAT data, um, but I can tell you, well, you just ruined my last slide. That we are looking closely at the eighth and ninth grade transition, and the state just put on a, um, a data workshop that had multiple sessions, you know, for the entire day last week. And one of the sessions that I was able to attend, along with Ms. Swanson and the Sinal, Dr. Sinal, was that, uh, looking at smarter balance and is there a correlation to PSAT, the eight, nine test? There's a, there's a mild correlation, but there is at least something that can give us some data. There's no reason why a ninth grade teacher couldn't look at three years of SBA data, NWA data for their incoming ninth grade students and say, what does this tell us about these students and how am I going to customize my instruction? Now, again, all that data is either four months old or years old, so it really is, you got to use that as a starting point, that you really help check up, and then do a deeper dive into the students sitting in front of you.
Well, I just wasn't sure if the ninth grade teachers, knowing there's already a problem, did they change your curriculum this year to help them with that? I mean, are you implementing it already?
So, um, we haven't made any big curricular adjustments to our ninth grade curriculum, our Algebra One course is our Algebra One course. Um, well, we've bolstered, I, I, I'll give you a non-anecdotal, a seventh grade teacher, which is a little bit removed, last year said to me, these kids can do more than I ever imagined they can do. And this is a fifteen-year vet, seeing that, really teaching flexible thinking and this concept-based math that we've really been working on a rollout for seven, eight years. It's both, it, it hit him last year, basically. Those students who've really since K been enrolled in that instruction, him saying like, wow, this is, like, these kids, they think differently than I ever had kids think like this in the past. And that's fifteen years in. So I would say, um, we're seeing definitely a shift in how our kids think about mathematics. It's not what you and I were taught, which was, there's a procedure, follow the procedure, do the dark procedure, know the procedure, like, just do the procedure. You know, we want them to be really good thinkers. Now, our eight, our high schools, the, the, those kids are actually sitting in eighth grade that have been enrolled since K. They do the same thing I would say that that eighth grade could do anyway, with the early gaps in their classroom, it's just through the kids, they're working to, 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 to the tall construction, holding off on the beginning of the year, using social affect behavior to figure out, can our kids learn, and then moving around now, there's flexibility with, you know, with changes to the, 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 to
Went up slightly. Statistically significant, no, but in general as a trend smooshing everything together for the most part we went up. And I did, you know, I could do this individual arrows for each dirt for the most, I believe there was one district that was flat or had a little positive, but the other three all went down. So, one more wave. Smar- uh, smarter balance, this is year over year, as you recall, this is same grade, different students. Percentage at goal. Third grade. So this is why I'm cautious about making any claims this year. We had great growth in the previous year year over year and now we've had a slight decline in third grade. Again, growth in that third, like fourth grade to fourth grade, twenty sixteen, fifteen, sixteen, sorry, I forgot, and down again in fourth grade. Same trend in fifth grade, so you can see the previous year, there was a bump up. This was recovering back, not what you'd wanna see, there was a decline and then you had to recover back. Ideally, we see the same graphs that we saw in math, let's see if it's mine. Essentially flat in seventh grade and eighth grade is a little bit better story, more growth in that area and we can talk about that in a moment. So, as a whole, to give you the overall summary for all grades, to give you this vertical graph, starting in twenty sixteen, how did we do year over year? Different students, same grade. Third grade, decline. Fourth grade, more of a significant decline. Fifth grade, a decline. Sixth grade, an increase, but again, remember that, there was a dip from the previous year. Seventh grade, a decline and eighth grade, a better increase. So overall, if we're taking a look at this snapshot in time, clearly, there's some cause for concern that we would want to investigate further. In grades third, fourth and fifth, there's something that we're gonna take a closer look at. Any questions before I move on to the growth data for the same grades? We are gonna talk about all this in a moment. So, this is the growth scores. Again, this is percent of students at target and then the percentage of students that met their achievement goal. So, strictly standing yes or no. Percentage of students, sharp decline, forty-eight to forty-one percent. This is all grades four through eight, pushed together. So we saw, again, this is forty-one percent of all our students in fourth through eighth grade met their individual growth target. It'll be different by student, but did you do it yes or no? Fifty-nine out of sixty, so no. Next, on the right-hand side, fifty-nine out of sixty is ninety-nine percent, roughly speaking. So, that, much better in terms of that, again, a decline. To give me perspective, I wanna see, okay, how did we do compared to the state? As you recall, the state declined in math. There was a significant decline in the percentage of students that met their goal, roughly the same seven percent. And then the same thing overall target achieved, there was a similar decline of eight percent. So, we are mirroring the state at this time, as well as, I did a rough analysis of the four other districts, there was also decline in those districts as well. So overall, across the board, there was an ELA decline. I don't have a reason for it and something the state is gonna be examining and hopefully give us some insight into, but it's something that we are examining in district because we don't teach all the kids the state, we don't teach our students. So cohort analysis, a little bit better. Again, this is at goal, but rough cohort. So, this case, this gives over third grade three years ago, then fourth grade, then fifth grade, better increase. So, removing more students into that yes zone, into that cut score. Fourth to sixth grade, we moved some, a little bit of flat, fifth to sixth grade, that transition from elementary to middle school. Fifth grade, sixth grade into seventh grade, better. Again, moving more students into the, into grade level, into that cut score. And then six, seven and eight, another area where we have to take a look at what's happening as we move into eighth grade. Why are we not accelerating? You know, we start with a good number at students at grade level, we should be building on that, so it's something we need to take a closer look at. So what are we doing? Because we do have some concerns here. So I don't wanna speak to this, but I'll briefly review this, um, so we have Dr. Sennel with us this evening. So we wanna ensure that our recent instructional initiatives are refined. We, and I look back on this, this is the start of my third year, when I think of all the things that Milford has undertaken in the past five years, it's incredible, I would say. The number of things that they've implemented, we refined our reading and writing practices, it's significant shift. It was not just a minor shift, there was monumental shifts in instruction and in expectations. And it's a matter of saying, have we really taken the time to step back and ensure that all these things we expect teachers to do were actually doing well? So that's one thing we need to make sure is actually say, we expect this, are we looking for it? Are we talking to teachers about it and are we giving reflection based on that? Similar to the math, it's the same idea of this individualized instruction, individualized instruction. We talk about the diagnose, about the checkup every year, but we have to do a deep dive. And there's tremendous amount of data that we have at the elementary level in terms of what do we need to do in terms of reading instruction. At the middle school level, well, I don't know if you wanna add to that for the elementary, Dr. Sennel.
Sure, um, thank you so much to the board. I, as you know, we've been incredibly supportive over the last few years, as Mr. Burt was so kind to point out. We have undergone some significant changes in ELA. The, the assessment system locally as far as benchmark assessment that we have now put in place for K eight. The shift to readers and writers workshop, K eight. Uh, moving from a, a traditional approach to just discrete spelling to a more integrated word study program, K eight. We've taken on a lion's share of work and the teachers have been fantastic. I mean, you know, we've got incredibly qualified people that we work together in Milford, but we know that we have some work to do, as Mr. Burt said, to refine our practices. To take a step back now to say, alright, where is it that we need to elevate our work and also check in? Because as kids are progressing through the system, as you saw through the cohort data, they are cumulatively getting stronger. Our kids continue to come to the next grade level, ready to do the next level of work. So we have to just maintain that our momentum within ELA is keeping up with where the kids are. And as we continue to grow and refine our practices, meeting our readers and writers where they are, personalizing that instruction, finding those just right texts that you have been so supportive, helping us to build within our classroom libraries and our book clubs, and just continuing to move the work forward. So, Mr. Burt and I are working closely together, along Carol Swift and I are doing some leadership work along with our reading team and also representation for my administrative colleagues to really take a look at those SRBI practices, to make sure that our kiddos who are falling set in below are getting targeted meaningful support both within classroom and within intervention instruction. So, I'm excited about the work that's ahead. I have every confidence that our teachers and myself along with our admin colleagues can take charge and move this to a stronger place. I'm not gonna jump on Mr. Whiskeman to make a prediction for next year, but sir, I can tell you, uh, we are dedicated to continue to grow the readers and writers in the public school.
Mr. Ed, who are elementary principals, might speak to some of the efforts around reading?
Sure. Um, and certainly, it's very similar in many ways to what Mrs. Curry talked about with math as well. Uh, we have a lot of interventions in place. What's really nice on the elementary level is the unbelievable amount of information that we learn about our children as readers. So at the beginning of the year, we're doing a number of benchmark assessments, we're looking at our SBA, we're looking at our NWA, and we're really identifying exactly what our kids need. We identify trends in the grade level and we identify trends in our classes and then we dip down the same way we do in math and really ask ourselves now specifically what does each child need? And we build our literacy program around that.
So then, yes, sir.
And so which school is that?
Middle side.
So, uh, and then at the middle school, one of the other things that we're doing is the intervention piece as well, if you will speak to that or to our medical principals.
There's also some great news for the middle school, I think, uh, you know, I believe you're all aware, we are in our, at the end of our first year of a fully revised curriculum in grade six through eight, uh, similar to the work of Mrs. Swanson. Uh, we also knew we needed to elevate our work around readers and writers workshop with our middle school adolescent readers, uh, wanting to keep them engaged and motivated to read into those teen years. So over the last two years, we've really been working to grow our curriculum into a place where students have more choice, where kids are reading more books, they're engaged in amazing texts that their teachers are able to work with. And we also are doing some incredible work with our reading team, uh, where teachers are pushing into classrooms and supporting students through an extended ELA block. So that kids that need a little extra support are getting it right within that core classroom. So the intervention work is directly applied to the core instruction. So it's not anything that's not outside, it's not anything that's above and beyond, but it's made meaningful for kids right in that moment. So I think, uh, the principals can speak a little bit more to the success that we've seen, uh, with the local data based on that instructional model. But I can tell you, the middle school work is really taking off and I feel really confident about some of the work in the local.
Steve Gally, Principal Herbicide. Uh, to go along with Dr. Senn- uh, Sennel saying, um, you know, the sixth grade has a new schedule this year where we have a built-in intervention period, where we have teachers pulling students to help with their deficiencies that they have in reading, but also with math. At times, we also have our reading specialists pulling the more needy students who have the greater deficiencies. Um, but also in seventh, eighth grade, as mentioned, you know, at all three middle schools, we have a double block of playing drugs for students who need that extra support, who are, you know, are not our most needed students, but all, are the ones who are just on those cusp, who could use some extra support. And through the data that we're seeing, we're seeing that they are improving in NWA, in that smarter balance, um, their common assessments are equally showing that information. But also, what the biggest thing is with shifting the curriculum, students are reading more. They're not only just reading more in language arts, but they're reading more in social studies, in science. Because we all know that as you start getting older, you're gonna start reading informational texts, you're gonna be reading for information across all content areas. So by pulling more of our teachers in to help support the reading initiatives, that's helping as well.
That's a, a great point, I do wanna emphasize going up to the high school as well, that we can't tag SAT scores just to the math department and the U of department. That there, you know, there are different skill sets, there's a different, you know, if you look at the new SAT, and remember I gave you a few questions a year ago on the SAT, you, there are, within a reading, uh, question, you could have a table of scientific data. So there's no reason why we couldn't, we share the load with this information across all disciplines, that there are, there are opportunities for students to read, to do math, to look at tables, to examine evidence. There's multiple ways we can do this, it's not just, you know, that old SAT where you have, you know, the yacht is to regatta type of thing. And it's far more nuanced and can be applicable to all disciplines. Same thing at the middle school level, same thing at the elementary level, we talk about reading, uh, that it's not just in reading class, especially we get into fourth and fifth grade with the departmentalization, you know, social studies, there should be doing a lot of reading and research as well as the science, you know, there should be some mathematics application in that area. So I don't want you to think that we're just looking in lanes, it's strictly just math teachers and, and, and reading teachers, that this is a widespread issue for everyone. Any questions? Shifting to the high school now, PSAT. This is again, percent of goal year over year, same grade, different students. So this is, uh, ELA reading essentially for tenth grade, a decrease, seventy-three to seventy-one percent, different students. Uh, eleventh grade PSAT, again, taken in the fall, coming up shortly, a slight increase. So, in essence, statistically insignificant increase, but, uh, in general, a much higher level at the achievement level, somewhere in the seventy range as opposed to our math scores which were lower than that in the thirty to forty range. So, there is that gap, which is another concern for us, if our students are capable. One of the insights too, we had from the state is those that perhaps the benchmarks are off a little bit for the state, uh, I'm sorry, for the PSAT, they could either be higher in their opinion or they should be evened out, so there's more similarities between the two scores. But for now, these are the benchmarks that we are working with. SAT, uh, again, this is where we go over to, this is percentage at goal. We're gonna look at the four comparison districts in the state, we're looking year over year and as well as cohort data. So in this case, four comparison districts in the state, very similar. Grade eleven SAT, year over year, different students, seventy-five to seventy-seven percent. So, you know, the, in, in twenty sixteen, there were seventy-five or three quarters of our students that met the benchmark, in twenty seventeen, seventy-seven percent of students were at benchmark. And then the, uh, this is the, this is the comparison again, smooshing all the districts together. The dirt, overall, three percent, again, the number, percentage of students at the cut score compared to one year to the next year. The state, no change, and for us, two percent more students, I'm sorry, the difference is two percent between the two years. And then the cohort, which is a little bit better, that we saw from sophomore year to junior year, fall to fall, relatively flat, the benchmark goes up, but then a nice increase from the fall to the spring for the same students. Again, this is percentage of students at the cut mark. Different assessments, different grade levels, so the benchmark changes. So, questions on that, I went through that quickly, apologies.
Mrs. Federico? Can you just repeat what you said about the state looking at the benchmark?
The, the state is working closely with the college board.
Too low? Okay.
And so, in, the college board has come out with cut marks for high school students, eleventh grade at that time of the year for math and language arts. There's a difference, it's a much more stringent cut mark for math than there is in terms of the overall scale scores. You recall, the scale score is zero, I'm sorry, four hundred to eight hundred. And the math cut mark is five thirty and the ERW is four ninety, the English reading and writing is four ninety. So there's a forty point difference in the scale score. This is based on years of data, in essence, and, and thousands and thousands of students taking the new really designed SAT in conjunction with the state. We did hear from the state last week at this data convention, they are working with the college board to ensure that those meet the needs of students, that they are college and career ready, as is the waiver they're supposed to be doing with the federal government, the SSA. So that's, that's what we heard from the state and we are waiting to hear their guidance on it. For now, this is where we are and this is the benchmark we are using.
Do you, uh, sorry, one more question, speaking of the state, do you think you'll hear anything back from the state in terms of them looking at their results, uh, I'm sorry, going back to the SBA testing?
Yes, the state does a tremendous amount of analysis, um, as, you, you all met, uh, Majid from the state last week. They, they look for trends, they wanna understand if there's a shift down. In both cases, math and, uh, lang- and language arts, in essence, in terms of the growth model, went down for both, for both areas, students at cut score and the average of target achieved. So there, they will do analysis, it's gonna take them months. Um, we were just pleased that they gave us the SBA scores as well as the growth model in, in relatively short time compared to past years and I think they're gonna continue to, to speed up that process. But the actual analysis, looking at all the elements, I think would take another four months.
Okay.
And I'm hopeful that they'll give us some guidance as to, you know, what are some of the trends, what are they noticing, is there something, uh, is there a misalignment, was the assessment different this year? I'm not sure what the trends would be, but I'm, I'm hopeful. They've, they've been very good to us in terms of sharing information. Uh, we get regular reports from them constantly, as well as all the data backup for those who are statisticians, you can go into, look at what they're actually using in terms of their analysis, which is nice, they share everything, which is great.
So when you get something back like that, if it's significant, would you share it with the board?
Of course, of course. So, in terms of high school, uh, you know, overall achievement is higher than the math scores as we said, but this is not an area we're just gonna rest on and hope for the best that things will go, move forward. We are making adjustments at the high school level. Uh, Dr. Gilleski or, or Mr. Thompson, if you wanna speak to some of the work we're doing in the English Language Arts area?
I'm Kristina Inglesky, I'm the Assistant Principal at Fordham. Um, as Dr. Sennel alluded to with our middle schools and our elementary schools, we're really continuing to refine our practices with implementing our curriculum, revising it, looking for, um, that alignment between the common core and the SAT, uh, but making sure that we're really addressing those core literacy skills that students need as they're going off to college. Definitely utilizing our support centers to their, uh, greatest potential by both referring students as well as encouraging them to access all the resources we have for them. But it, for us at this point at the high schools, especially at Fordham, it's about engaging ourselves in that work with the students we have in front of us, uh, to make sure that we are giving our teachers all the tools they need, um, to have our students continue to progress as we move forward.
Uh, just, just to close, you know, we were with our high school staff recently and one of the best, um, I wanna say compliments to the work, you know, not to self, but to the work, is that our freshman teachers, during some of our feedback, uh, at the beginning of our meeting, said, Jen, I gotta tell you, these eighth graders are coming in better prepared than they ever have. So to echo, uh, what Miss Swanson was saying earlier, the cumulative efforts that we're making, starting from when they're small and they move all the way through our middle school, are gaining. That our, our freshmen are coming in with a passion for reading, with a passion for writing, and they're excited to know themselves as readers. That is a huge monumental gain and tribute to the work of the K eight teachers. So I'm excited to continue to work with Dr. Gilleski, uh, Mr. Thompson, the remainer of the high school staff, to continue to grow that passion for reading at the high school and to incorporate even more elements of choice into our high school curriculum for our readers and our writers. So, thank you.
I, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, which Dr. Sennel may, might be best to answer. Um, you spoke before to the, this is, we've, we just completed the first full year of a full curriculum revision.
For six, eight, yeah.
For six, eight, so, um, the twenty sixteen, seventeen school year was the first year that it was.
For a full implementation.
All implemented. So, um, how long does it take for the results, for the benefits to show, um, when you make a switch like that? So was it in, it was incremental switches, right? You didn't, you did one year at a time, I believe?
We grew, we grew slowly, a few uni- a few units per year, per level.
Mm-hmm.
So instead of going six, seven, eight, we actually looked at a full core units in sixth and seventh and eighth, because we wanted to kids have more, uh, exposure to text.
A bunch. Okay.
So as far as incremental growth, um, I would say statistically speaking, three years, I don't know, Mr. Burt, that sounds like, like something that's reasonable, for six to, to increase all the way through eight, to, to move through the entire process. But every, the thing that's so beautiful about readers workshop is, every year as we hone our practices, kids have more time with eyes on text. And there's multiple research points that indicate that when kids are engaged in meaningful independent reading with a guide on the side and a teacher who knows them as a reader, can recognize those reading behaviors and teach into them and respond, that's where we're going to see our students continue to grow in their ability to comprehend and critique powerful, powerful text. So I say, you know, I think every year it's going, it's going to increase. Um, it's amazing to see, we have sixth grade teachers who have their, their boards in their room where their kids read a hundred and nine books last year. I mean, it, it's, it's an amazing shift to go from, from a real set of, you know, four to six books to just tons of books. And it's, it's an amazing thing to see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a, Mr. Jagzinski?
But we're not seeing any significant improvement in reading scores.
Except with the cohort group. One thing that I continue to, to be, uh, I'm not, I don't wanna say satisfied, because I'm not satisfied with where the scores are this year, sir, not at all. But as our cohorts continue to go through, they continue to grow cumulatively, that that group of kids every year comes to the table better prepared to attend to that test. And as we continue to grow in our SRBI practices, where we're targeting individual needs of students that maybe aren't quite there, I do believe that that is also going to have a significant impact. And we're just at the end of our first iteration of that as well.
So if I could bring the board back a year, when we did this report, we saw great improvement in, in reading and language arts and it was flat in math. So, as, as we had this discussion when we talked about our targets, you know, we do wanna add in those, you know, the, the target was for twenty twenty and I left the, the blanks in there for each year because that you're going to have variations year to year. Um, you know, the board did ask that we put in those yearly numbers to track progress, but it's, it's cautious, uh, or caution that you, you have to be careful year over year, that's why you even wanna ask about math. That's great, you know, they, next year there could be a flat line and language arts could take off, but for us, it's really just to look at a general trajectory of are we making the right decisions? Are we doing the right things for students? Are we making good decisions? And are we not making too many of them? One of the other things, in terms of implementation, um, you know, when you talk about change science or brum and science, the first year of implementations, generally there is an increase, but then there's an implementation dip that takes place because of lack of sustainability, either lack of focus or fatigue or whatever, or it just takes time for things to dig in and then there's an eventual uprise, but you have to sustain it. The issue is with most districts and most institutions is that you do this big fanfare, you roll something out and after a year, if it doesn't give you the results you want, you drop and go on to the next thing, you know, the initiative of the month. So one of the things that we talk about and we are doing is trying to sustain, we're placing our bets, we've heard that before, that we are doing the right things and that there might be a blip year over year. But if we sustain this and we maintain it and we put our focus on it, which is part of my role, I'm meeting regularly with all the groups and meeting with, you know, the high school administration about math on a regular basis, you know, and guiding these folks, that we, we put our focus in on it, but we don't hammer people if things don't turn out the right way, then we're gonna see the sustainable growth. That's our bet and we talked about that last week as well.
But, but our approach with the readers workshops and the writers workshops, how old is that approach at this point?
In, in the district?
Right.
We have had, um, and I would say, middle school is still in process of growing, the units are there, but now it's about the implementation of the units. So I would say one year that we've really been working with it. And K, in K five, this was our fourth year of having a fully implemented.
I mean, that's a long, a long time, we're not talking about one year or two year. And, you know, I, I.
Agreed, agreed.
You know, uh, was there any data, we only have two years' data.
Right.
There was two years prior to that. Was there any data two years prior to that that showed an improvement in reading?
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
You don't, no?
Yeah, unfortunately, and the SBA data I know, uh, shifted because the performance assessment was in it and then it wasn't. So, that data set is a little skewed, um, but that is something we can look into shortly.
So this is actually one of the questions we have, uh, talking about as administrative staff. We've put time, energy, money into these initiatives, if you will, into a shift in instruction. And we're beginning to see the impact of it, but it's not as dramatic as we would like. So that's absolutely the same question you're asked, we are asking ourselves, you know, we've, we asked it as recently as, as last month, where, what is it we're doing? So, part of the analysis is to go into classrooms and say, okay, is, so we, again, that, they're talking about maintaining and refining. We assume that just because we rolled out readers workshop, that everyone knows how to do it to their best of their ability when we're talking about staff. But we had, you know, you, you see the report every year, how many new teachers do we have every single year? When we make, um, reductions at the elementary level because of our contract, we switch teachers all around, it's a, it's a shell game. In the spring where we moved, I wanna say twelve teachers around this summer. Um, you know, I could have been a fifth grade teacher based on seniority, I'm now in first grade. The fifth grade mindset and instruction is radically different than first grade, that's another deep dive we have to do into data analysis. What is the impact of shifting staff? So, because it takes time for you to become, I know when, uh, at the high school level, by the way, Mr. Burt, next year you're teaching civics. Okay, so I'm gonna learn everything that I need to know about instructing civics next year and the first year was bad. I'm just gonna say it, I can, you're on camera. It wasn't great, it took me a year or two to get better at that and refine my practice. So we constantly shift teachers around, we make, we change up teams in some of our buildings, it's a team of two in a second grade. They're working well together, then we have a new teacher in there, does that impact? I'm not making any claims, I'm just saying, this is an idea that we need to explore. So in terms of refinement, how long does it take? It takes two to three years really to become an expert in a content area and then actually refine that mastery though, you know, ten years in essence, you know, with Mike, that's, that's a vertizom. So, um, that's not statistical. But in, in essence, you know, really I could tell you, my fourteenth year of teaching was my best one because I just kept, you know, looking, trying to do better, going to more things, talking to more people. You know, my first year was bad, so, you know, but so it's just a matter of, of figuring that. But we, we do have coaches in place to help with that transition, our principals are outstanding with that at the elementary level and all levels, but in terms of transitioning our, our youngest, uh, students, et cetera. So we are, we do put all the systems in place and we are asking the same questions you are. Why are we not seeing this burst of growth, uh, that we're, we wanna see in, in reading, since we've had such systems in place for years? So it's absolutely the same question we're asking.
So I went, I went back to last year's report, um, I didn't go any farther than that. And there was actually increases between fifteenth, twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen in ELA. And there was actually increases between fifteens, twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen in the ELA, um, in most of the grades, not all of them. They weren't, wasn't big burst of growth, but it was some increase. And, um, so, I mean, my hope is that we'd see continued, you know, this year certainly is disappointing, you know, the the cut scores. But, um, but we did, you know, Ajit was very clear, but he he did mention that a couple times, that, you know, your initiatives, you have to keep, you have to keep at them because you might see dips in your scores. Um, so I take, I, you know, I take, uh, to heart what you said about, um, you know, just continuing the effort and, you know, refining where you need to refine, but not not using the the method of the of the month concept type of thing, so.
That's hard to do.
Uh-huh, yeah.
It's hard to do.
You know, at the at the district level, there's a lot of pressure.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I'm a New York Giants fan, you can imagine the pressure on them to change what they're doing, you know. Um, but, you know, then I look at the Patriots and they continue to refine what they do from top on down, and it's a success story. As opposed to changing your system every week to try to meet the demands. You gotta place your bets and then if you don't get there, you're fired after a year, but that's kind of how it is. So I'm somewhere in the middle of my presentation here, but I'm essentially at the end in my presentation.
Did you, did you get into the next steps?
Oh, I didn't, sorry.
That was the, for the grades to nine twelve.
So we talked, uh, did we talk about nine twelve a little bit, about next steps, right?
Yes.
And then I'll give you the quick snapshot of where we are.
Yeah, I think we're on the very last page of the presentation.
Yep.
Almost.
Okay, here we go. Snapshot in time, how are we doing? Because you wanna know how are we doing, uh, in the ELA, similar to math. Percentage, goal, we're higher. We're somewhere in the sixties if we average out, uh, the SBA and the SAT. Is that better than where we are in math? Yes. Is it where we want to be? Absolutely not. We should be higher than that when we're gonna get there. Year-over-year data, mixed, depends upon the grade level, not universal increase across all grade levels. Terms of cohorts, stronger, across at all grade levels. Perigordur, mixed, depending upon the grade level. And then growth is the biggest area of concern at this point. We didn't see that growth specifically in the SBA. So that's another area that we need to take a look at. Why didn't we have the growth that we expected year-over-year and do a deep dive analysis in it? So that's the snapshot for the ELA.
Questions? Any more questions? Yes, Mrs. Kuzinsky?
We're talking about, um, increasing or or seeing an increase in reading scores and things like that. We have the N W E A scores for many years. Are we seeing an increase in reading in that? Because this is relatively new testing, we don't have that much in the SBA and that. So is that with the, in the elementary grade showing greater increase year-over-year?
It would be hard to make a summative statement on that without that information in front of me. I don't wanna misspeak or be inaccurate. Um, but I know that's something that we use both at the district level and at the building level. And we're constantly checking in to watch as groups travel through the system, to see that percentile that are meeting the norm or above the norm is continuing to shift forward. So that is something that we're aware of, and we do do a lot of analysis within that, but you try to project as a whole system how we're doing. Um, I would have to do a little work on that.
We can gather that information.
Yeah, because I think that you've got a lot more years of information with that to see.
One, two, yeah.
Jen? I think we So I think we take the SBA data, which is really big data, and for me, I'd, I then take that and I do a comparison and Jen, I should say, Jen and I do a comparison then of where does N W, did N W A tell us this or not? You know, because that's part of the story of fifth grade. What are we seeing in N W A and what do we, SBA told us one thing, what did, what did N W A tell us? So we we do do that analysis to see, is it comparative? Is it, but in some cases, it's, they're, they're, they're telling us different things. So then we have to dig further and go, well, why is, you know, third grade on SBA strong, but on N W A, we, it's not as strong? So, you know, what is that about that? We ask some questions, I reach out to other districts and say, are you guys noticing this trend too? Is this just a Milford thing? You know, so so there's definitely a lot of questions that we begin to ask when you get this really large one day of a kid's life, you know, for math, it's four hours of their life, as opposed to what about was N, what, N W A is more current around them. We see really strong growth in N W A, really amazing growth. So, you know, and and that to me is something that we do celebrate. So while, you know, growing is what we wanna do with our kids, um, they all come to us at different points. So we do, um, yes, I guess you would say, SBA tells us something, but N W A to me tells us a little bit more. And then our local assessments tells us a little bit more, you, so you kinda keep feeling that under.
How often do they diverge? Do they often diverge or rarely?
No, not very often. So, but I, like, I can tell you, for example, off the top of my head without having, like,
Yep.
Third grade, it diverges. N W A tells us we're weak, SBA tells us we're better than what N W A is telling us.
Right.
I wouldn't say we're strong. But, you know, they're telling, N W A really makes us look, we look comparatively not as strong as SBA told us. So then we go, we start to question which one's which, what's going on. And that is when I start to have conversations with other folks in the state that also give that N W A.
Right.
Any other questions? Mr. Hagadorn?
Okay, you said you did check with other districts. What what was the results?
Um, so you have to find a district that's also doing N W A the exact same way we do, which is we do it in K two as well as three, four, five. Uh, most districts actually only pick up in grade three. So part of that is, is we're getting a projected growth target from second to third grade that they actually don't have. So that's where I'm trying, I have yet to find a district that's actually doing K five N W A. They, most, everybody who I've spoken to, they actually begin in grade three. So, and where I say it diverges is really around that growth. So we expected kids to, it's telling us that our kids should be in a certain place, and we're not seeing that happen. But yet, when I compare achievement, or it 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 tells us mixed information, like, it's kinda, it really did make you scratch your head and go, well, then let's look at our local assessment data and then SBA, how how to, you know. Basically, you see that N W A data and you go, oh, like, oh, no. And then our kids actually end up doing okay in SBA. So we have to, I think, adjust that thinking of what N W A says is goal might not be appropriate, might not, might be lost in their work. Because they, um, it's, districts make a decision as to which grades they wanna give that N W A. We luckily give it in K five, which is great information. But the test switches for our kids from being read to them, so they go from having it in second grade, they're hearing it, the mathematics, they don't have to read that. And in third grade, that's no longer the case. And we surmise that that's part of the, it's a change in possibility for our kids. So to make that prediction is kinda, are they really making an accurate prediction because that changes? And they're comparing third grade to every other kid who never ever took it in a different way.
Mrs. Federico?
Thank you, Matt Chair. Um, so I just wanted to comment that I I appreciate the, um, some of the changes in the format and the charts. Um, I thought, for me, the colors were really helpful. Um, and I just wanna say, I especially liked the, um, the graph where you had the arrows with the percents. So like page seventeen and page thirty-three, that gave me a really good idea of how we were growing compared to the state and compared to the rest of our our DURB. Um, and I think it's a very good story in math, and I will stay tuned to hear what you find out, um, from the state as far as the ELA side. Um, one thing, I just wanted to comment that as, like, one thing I didn't hear was, as a district, what are we doing, um, when we've identified something was missing or weak in an eighth grade results? What are we doing in ninth grade to catch up? It sounded like that was left up to individual teachers. If the teachers catch it, they can do it. But I didn't hear it being addressed as a district.
So I thought I addressed it, but I can readdress it in, so we'll take eighth, ninth grade specifically.
Okay.
Um, as I said, I met with both high schools this summer and we're, you know, they're tasked with looking specifically at transition from eighth to ninth grade, but also of nine percent, tenth to eleventh, taking a deep dive into the data, was it telling us, and how are we going to make up? And it has to be right outside, right out of the gate, if you will. Um, and we can't, we can't wait till October to start making some decisions about students. We have this data at the end of the year, so we could be making decisions in the summer, same thing, fifth to sixth grade. That information is available, whether it's our local assessments, uh, including N W A. But also the SBA came out in a timely manner, so we could, you know, look at the big snapshot and say, oh, wait a second, fifty percent of our students did not meet the benchmark on multiple measures coming into my school in sixth grade. What are we gonna do as a sixth grade team to address this? And again, it cannot be through what you've heard as the SRBI process, um, you know, trying to individualize that. That's whole group instruction, that's core instruction for all students, something we call tier one. You cannot put, you know, a hundred and, well, eighty students out of a, a West Shore, for example, into a tiered process that doesn't work. So that work is done in the summer. I know we meet, I meet with all the the principals in the summer, we, their goals are tied to this. So when we have the end of years in the summer, then we talk about what happened last year and then what's the process for next year. So it's not just an end-of-year meeting, you know, when Dr. Fieser might meet, we talk about what are the goal coming up and specifically how are we gonna address that, what are the strategies? Also, in the summer, um, part of this work is the skip work, which is the continuous improvement plans for the schools. Uh, and they take a look at the data in their teams in the summer and say, okay, what are we doing as a school moving forward? And the direction from central office, from Dr. Fieser, mine, is that you need to pay attention to these data. You need to pay attention to what's happening in these grades. You can't wait, and you have to address these. It's not gonna be a quick fix, and it's not gonna go, we're not gonna jump from forty-eight percent to seventy-eight percent in one year. But we have to ensure that we're constantly looking at our practice, constantly looking at our instruction, curriculum assessment, is everything aligned? Then what? So what? It's not just a matter of admiring the data, we have to actually take action on it.
Okay. So if there was something that seemed to be missing in any grade, the fifth grade, sixth grade, you would go back and look at, um, fifth grade to make sure that the current fifth grade students are not missing that piece? And you would go to the sixth grade and make sure that they get a catch-up?
It's both.
Yeah, okay.
Um, we have to do both.
Right.
You know, you can't wait for the fifth grade to make the same mistake, the new one, and then we'll fix it in sixth grade. We wanna, we have to look at all the grades.
Both, yes, both, yes. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Mrs. Casey?
Just a comment, just wanna thank Mr. Burt and all the administrators for being here tonight and for your enthusiasm, for spending the day with with these kids and your hard work and dedication, um, and for their enthusiasm for reading for the kids that are in sixth grade that are are enjoying reading and loving to pick up the book, that's one for math, too. Thank you.
Mr. DeRigo?
Yeah, I'd also like to make a comment, Mr. Burtz. Um, as an elementary school teacher, I always had a saying, fifth grade is rule. And several principals in this room invited me to their graduation back in June. And what I mean by that is, when I was on the facilities committee for East Shore, when we would be doing it, and after the, um, architect would speak, he'd go, okay, now I'm going to explain it so a fifth grader can understand it. Yes, and I wanna say, Mr. Burtz, um, I appreciate everything you're doing, where we're going, and I appreciate your presentation so that everybody, even the Milford community, could understand it. It was concise, it was correct, it was on point, and I wanna thank you.
Any comments?
I did just wanna, um, point out to the board, 'cause N W E A came up. So N W E A was, the results were included in last year's presentation at this time, and I think the, I remember the consensus seemed to be that it was too much information, so it was taken out. Um, and it was, but it was included in the mid-year assessment, so.
One of the decisions, I didn't speak to this in the beginning, I apologize, uh, we talked about the assessments available. Um, we realized that we wanna make sure that the teachers are using that assessment for growth
Mm-hmm.
uh, along with other assessments, and that we wanted to remove it from, you know, the overall presentation to make sure that the, that's appropriately used, what it's supposed to be used for, which is instruction, as opposed to these once in, you know, a year screens, as you will. We really wanna make sure that that became an instructional tool. If we put too much emphasis on it at, to be frank, at the board level,
Mm-hmm.
then it perhaps gets translated into a greater risk for teachers. As opposed to, we we do have standardized measurements, you know, three through eight, uh, that we're accountable for, the principals are accountable for SAT, PSAT, which we're accountable at the high school level. So there is accountability. We felt that we covered it with those measurements and eventually with the science measurements. Uh, but that was a good tool for instruction, and we wanted to keep it separate.
I would agree with that. Any other comments?
Um, just one more question, just curious, do the parents get, um, test results for SBA? Do they get sent what their kids send?
We're, this week, hopefully, yeah, we're, we're, we're dividing them up because they send us, you know, West Shores, but the eighth grades move on now to law, so we have to separate them up, package up, I gotta rub or cover it. But hopefully this week, if not really next week.
Any other questions, concerns? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to, uh, public comment. I'll read the public comment statement, and if anybody in the audience would like to make a comment, you'll be with, welcome to do so. Speakers may offer objective comments about school operations and programs. The board encourages speakers not to express personal complaints or declaratory comments about Milford Board of Education personnel or any person associated with the Milford Public School System. Security issues and matters relating to negotiations and grievances will not be permitted. Consistent with the principal, uh, principles of the Federal Education Right to Privacy Act, discussion of students is prohibited absent parental labor. Please note the public comment is limited to the agenda item only at the, uh, the committee of the whole meeting, which is the assessment report. Um, we appreciate your stating your name and address and limiting your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to address the board this evening? Okay, seeing none, I will, um, take a motion, uh, motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to adjourn to the end of this round. Um, and yes, it is eventually not.
I just, I, I didn't see it, so.
And then, yes.
All right, thanks.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming.